Here's the entrance. I just point this out, you'll see the window at the bottom in the cellar. The plan that you got Monday or yesterday, Eileen noted that the existing conditions planned neglected to have that window on it. We just wanted to make sure that existing conditions plan was consistent with the inventory, which had the window listed, so we added that, so you had a complete plan. Next slide please. And this is from the grog side, if you will, or the westerly side of the back of the building. Next slide. And is this closer picture of the roof and the condition of the roof and the chimney? Next slide please. So, the proposal is to replace the addition and restore the rest of the building. The replacement addition will be two stories with a cantilever. It will use wood clavering and shingle plating. That will reduce the footprint compared to the existing wood addition. It will feature two over two windows to match the existing structure and remain lower in height than the brick portion of the structure. The proposed addition is towards the interior of the property and a step back from the existing brick structure, and Eileen will review that in greater detail. In addition, just as a laundry list before Eileen does her presentation, it will include the removal of the vines and the parch coating, restoring and repointing the brick facades, repairing the slate roof as needed, restoring and repainting the wood cornice, window lintels, and sills, fan lights, and side lights. One chimney closer to Middle Street will be restored as needed. The other will be rebuilt. Both will be parched and painted. If you could, next slide please. With that, I'm going to shift this, I'm going to start, turn it over to Eileen. But here's the proposed addition footprint. You can see that it steps a little bit back from the existing structure in the rear, which the historic commission was happy about. And then it comes in from the northern side of the property, where the property, the building before went right up against it. I will tell you that we have been to the historic commission. The historic commission has provided to you their comments. Some of their comments had to do with being more specific about the restoration of the windows. The plans that we did submit to this board included all of the notes they requested related to the restoration of the windows in the original structure. And Eileen will talk more specifically about that. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Eileen to go over the drawings.
Thank you, Lisa. So, as Lisa mentioned already, pointing out that the footprint has gotten smaller, I just wanted to know some of the design thoughts on why we made such moves. So it was clear, as you could see in the photographs we reviewed earlier, that the state of the current building is in serious disrepair. So it was, we knew that we would be rebuilding a structure, hoping to rebuild a structure. But what we considered was whether or not it needed to be on the exact same footprint. And so we intentionally made some moves to try to improve the situation in various aspects. So on the face that faces, say, the grog side of the property, we pulled that away from the property line to help reveal the existing corner of the brick building. So ever so slight, but an improvement off the property line by a foot. And then on the northeast side, along the butter's driveway side, we pulled that as well off the side property line, trying to give, you know, a little bit breathing room for, in some respect to that butter, to pull it away and provide some area for other elements that go along with a residence and some offices. So for storage of recycling, et cetera. And then likewise, on the center street elevation of that structure, we pulled that away from the center street property line to help improve the parking situation. It's roughly two feet closer to the center street boundary. And this allowed for, A, I'll point it out on the elevation, revealing a window on the brick building on the first floor, and then B, helping with the space for what we propose as two parking spots. And again, in addition, removal of the tree, as you saw in the photographs, which will be a huge improvement as well. So, Handy, if we could go to, actually slide ahead to a proposed drawing in that slide 28. Okay, so I think what I'll do is start by going around the building and just reviewing some of the changes that we're proposing. So more or less, the brick structure is in pretty good shape. And what we are proposing to restore as much as we can as possible. So, as Lisa mentioned, we have been in front of the historic commission. And with their recommendation, we met with the window woman, and she supported the idea of restoring all the double humps. That you see the two over twos, a lot of them are in relatively good shape, and she saw no problem with restoring them. Again, those are sort of Victorian era window, not original. There's one original window, which I will point out in just a moment. But starting with that top left image, the face that faces Middle Street, thank you. All of those double humps, two over two, on the first and second floor will be restored. The two storefront windows would be replaced, just the glass replaced. There's actually a second layer of some sort of, I'm sure it's some, trying to create some thermal break there, but some level of a storm that's basically failing. So there's a lot of moisture getting between the two levels, so there's a lot of foggy. So we're going to remove that exterior layer and just replace the glass on the interior so that it is insulated as well as tempered for safety. That door, as you see it, currently has a plywood piece over what you can see on the interior. It's a transom window. So we would like to remove that or restore that window up top, as well as restore the door itself. All the wooden sills likewise to be restored. Some of them on the southern side have really suffered a lot of sort of weathering, I think because of the full sun and deterioration of some of the paints. It just allowed for more rot to happen. So it appears that the southeastern sill seem to be in the worst condition. So we would repair those and then repaint. On the very top gable end, that window there is actually a, existing is a six over six. It's a Roscoe type of 20th century replacement. We would like to go back to the two over two so that it is in keeping with the rest of them. But in operation, this one would be a casement. This to allow for egress needs on that top level. So that's the middle street facade. And as we move down towards the two at center street, likewise on the brick building, those seven windows can be restored. The, that side door there likewise has, can, and will be restored. There's some glass that's broken. I'm told from the window woman that the replacement of those glass, they could find them readily. So those will be replaced. And then on the interior side, some level of another layer to help with weather, temperatures coming in. So all of that to be restored as well. And then on that elevation is a bulkhead that's deteriorating. We'd like to improve and repair that from its current failing condition. On this elevation, you can see at the very top, there are two chimneys. The ones to the left is closer to Middle Street, and that will be restored. All of them, mind you, all the brick on the entire building will be restored as per the report's advisory on restoring brick and mortar. Then going to the right chimney, that will be rebuilt. And with brick again, and reparched, and those two chimneys will then be matching in their treatment. The roof is a slate roof that would be repaired and restored where needed. As you saw in some of the photographs, that shallower sloping one off that hill that needs repair. And then likewise on the grog street, grog side of the building, that back corner on the west side also needs repair. Then as you look to the right, that's our proposed addition. And that is a wooden structure, two storey, two and a half stories, as you see it. But I'm, there are two doors shown there. And the left door is the entry for the office slash retail space. And then the door to the right would be to the residential unit up above on the second floor. And if we slide down to the bottom left drawing, Handy, it's a better view to see how it relates to the existing bricks. So it's a camber roof type. You can see there, the narrower at the base, the narrower width of the building allows for that double hung on that, the right double hung on that first floor level to have a little breathing room. And then also, this allowed, you know, we pulled away from the west property line as well. As you could see on the top level, we've got some shed dormers coming off of the camberell. The front one is a step back one foot six from the exterior plate below. And then, and steps in on the sides, I'll show that in just a minute. And then on the right side of that camberell, you could see the shed dormer to the grog side. And that goes aligned with the exterior wall below as well as the sides. But yet, if we slide to the right of that last image, you can see that shed roof continues along the addition but stops prior to the brick building to avoid any collision with the original brick building. This wooden structure will be flabbards on the center street side and shingles on the back side, as well as the dormers. The, all the aspects of the wooden structure are all wood, except for the windows itself. Those would be a clad insulated window. This back elevation is actually this second floor brick, in the brick building, the second floor window there is the six over six window. That is, was the only one left of the original period. And it was pretty, it is in pretty good shape. But in the end, it sits behind, as you saw in that photograph where the two buildings are approximately nine inches apart, it sits behind the base of the building. So in the long run, we felt since it's not visible that we would replace those two windows, as you see there on the brick, with a clad window just for the longevity, given its proximity to the abutting structure. On the back as well, you will note that on the roof level, there is an existing skylight on the far right side, and we are proposing more skylights as shown to allow more light at the top level. Again, if we can restore some of the brick on that side, it really isn't, it's interesting. You popped your head out of a window on that side, and you could see that they did a little bit of parching just where they could reach from the window, and then that's it, you know. So I'm not really sure how one would maintain that without having very skinny employees to do the job. So likewise, that roof level there where the skylights are, that area needed a lot of repair. As you saw from the ivy shown in the original picture, in the previous pictures, that ivy was growing, you know, all the way around the building, from the parking area, if you will, all the way across this roof where the skylights are over jumping those nine inches and was creeping onto the adjacent building. In fact, those vines are still sitting on that building. So it really was just sort of strangling it from all directions. And as you saw in that middle street photo, it made its way all the way to the front. So we will be removing that on that northern side. We'll remove the parching, which I have to think they put on at some point to combat the ivy damage. But nonetheless, bring that back to brick exposure there. And that's, I think that covered all the materials on the building. As Lisa mentioned, on that bottom left drawing, you can now see a cellar sash I added to the drawing, which I'd like to show in the elevations, but was on the inventory list. So that's there as well. Yeah, okay. Next slide, there we go, two to convey. Again, the materials as shown, there's that stepping on the upper level just to break that two-story facade and provide a little bit of covering for those doors as well. You will also note that we've allotted some areas for some fenced areas for trash recycling where we can. The proposed drive will be brick. We'll use similar materials that already exist with the granite curving and the brick pass and the sort of granite wider curving at the driveway's edge, similar to what the adjacent of butter has on their driveway as well. The right side of the building, as you see a little bit of fencing there, that's actually meant to come out towards center street a little bit more. The illustrator didn't see that in the site plan, but nonetheless, that would extend closer to allow for more storage for rubbish and recycling. That, I don't know if anybody has any questions on the inventory list, but I'm happy to answer that and any other questions as they arise. But I will pass it back to Lisa for her presentation.
Thank you. Thank you, Eileen. So, Madam Chair, what I'd like to do is go through the criteria now. So in section 1087, both for the DoD special permit as well as a special permit for use, the first criteria is that the use is listed on the table of use regulations or elsewhere. Here, it's listed, and the mixed use is listed as allowed by special permit and be to zoning district and in the DoD. The next is the requested use is essential or desirable to public convenience or welfare. Here, a mixed use structure is prevalent throughout the downtown area. Indeed, the vibrancy of the downtown is credited by mixing residential and commercial uses in one building throughout the entire downtown. Mixed use will support foot traffic and reduce vehicle trips, promote office space, and enact a storefront on the first floor. Mixed use is a desirable and convenient use for the two district. The next is that the requested use will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety. Currently, the professional office use lacks sufficient parking. If one were to do the calculation on the 3,446 gross floor area, it would require 12 parking spaces in the current use. The new use is 955 square feet of retail slash commercial. That requires three parking spaces. And then the two units require four. So the total required parking spaces of the new use is seven. So we reduced the amount of required. Plus, we're actually going to be providing two parking spaces. Perhaps many, 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 many years ago, there was a parking space there. But you could see the size of that tree, and so it hasn't been for a long time. So I would say that we are actually creating two parking spaces in practicality. Further noted that adding housing to the downtown encourages foot traffic over vehicular traffic. And of course, there are sidewalks throughout this area and the downtown. And of course, there are sidewalks throughout this area in the downtown. And there will be no change as a result of that aspect of the criteria. The next is that the requested use will not overload any public drainage, water or sewer systems or other municipal systems. Here, the addition of two residential units will add a modest amount to the public infrastructure. Two residential units, four bedrooms, four hundred and forty gallons per day on the water sewer system is modest, to say the least, a drop in the bucket, to use a poor pun. Professional offices, office space exists. And as a result, that's likely not to have a net increase, obviously, over the reduction in office space. So there will be one less building here on, not one less building, but one less unsightly building on site. And the result will have no impact on the stormwater systems. There are no special use regulations in the ordinance for this particular use. The next is that the use will not impair the integrity or character of the district or adjoining districts nor be detrimental to help the welfare. Here, the requested use is entirely consistent with the remainder of the downtown. There are single family homes in the area, multifamily homes, businesses and mixed use buildings throughout middle, center and liberty streets. Mixed use is entirely consistent with and not detrimental to the integrity and character of the downtown district. Seventh criteria is that the request used not by its addition to the neighborhood causing excess of that particular use that could be detrimental to the character of the neighborhood. Here, mixed use is consistent with the downtown district. As I said earlier, there is a smattering of all different kinds of uses, particularly in this section of middle and center street. And it won't be in excess such that it would become a detriment to the area. The next is that the proposed use is in harmony with the purpose and intent of the ordinance. Once again, the use fits squarely within the purposes of the B two zoning district. The DOD requirements go to structures not to uses. And therefore, that will be addressed as part of the DOD criteria. And finally, that the proposed use will not be conducted in a manner which is essentially dangerous or nauseous. And of course, the reconstruction will not. And then it will be your typical retail and or commercial use along with two residential units. So with that, we believe we meet the special permit criteria for use as well as in the DOD. In addition, section twenty seven F five, the zoning ordinance sets forth the requirements for the downtown overly district. Here, new construction and alterations have to be compatible with the existing historic buildings and structures. In fact, new construction shall not disrupt the essential form and integrity of one, the historic building, structure or exterior architectural features, two, the lot where it is located, or three, its setting within the DOD. Moreover, the ordinance requires that new construction and alteration have to be compatible with the size, scale, i.e. color, except in paint color. Material and character of the subject historic building, structure and exterior architectural features on the lot where it exists and located in the setting within the DOD is the case maybe. Here, as you could see from the proposed plans and photographs, the proposed addition is more diminutive than the existing main structure and is smaller in footprint than the existing addition. The addition is set apart from the original structure by its materials and form and does not distract from the main historic structure. The proposal likewise is appropriate for the setting and sympathetic to the adjacent properties by slightly pulling away from the property lines than where the existing structure exists. And importantly, the new structures pulled further from the lot lines, as I said, is smaller in scale. Restractions being proposed for all the details of historic structures, Eileen has pointed out. And in addition to the proposed restoration of all, most all of the windows. For those foregoing reasons, we believe, as more fully set forth on the plans and as Eileen said, that the board can find that, in fact, the proposed alterations do not disrupt the essential form and integrity of the historic building or structure or its exterior architectural features, the lot where it is located or its setting within the DOD. Finally, an area where you're not typically sitting, but more likely the zoning board is, section nine B two of the ordinance regarding modification to preexisting nonperforming structures. In this instance, the board needs to find that the proposed modification will not intensify or extend any existing nonconformities and that the proposed change will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure. Here, the nonconformity is the lot. And there will not be changing the lot size, though we know intensification or extension of this nonconformity. And the lot size of professional office will remain even with mixed use. Finally, I think the board can find that the proposed change will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure. Again, the lot, nonconformity goes to lot size. The changes to the structure certainly will not be more detrimental than the existing structure. The new structure is pulled away from the lot lines and will likewise likewise expose more than historic brick building on the north side. Similarly, the mixed use is compatible with and benefits the downtown district, as noted above, and has less impact on parking. And the use of structure is consistent with and certainly not substantially more detrimental than the existing user structure in the neighborhood. With that, the app request the board's consideration approving special permit for use, special permit for the DOD and a modification to a preexisting nonconforming structure. Thank you.
So as we do in our normal procedure, and like board members, if we have any questions for clarification at this point, to ask them, then we'll go to public comment and then we'll come back for more deliberation. Questions right now?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. What is the roof material on the addition?
Our protections.
So the question about you mentioned the windows and the existing structure would be restored. Question about whether any storm windows are anticipated there or not as part of that restoration and what what you're contemplating there. I also think I saw the plans that the addition, the new windows are fiberglass. Would windows that are clad with fiberglass or are they fiberglass?
Right, great question. So to start with the question about storms, yes. So the existing storms would be removed and then replaced with same thing as what exists today, but ones that actually have some paint set up. And then on the back, the proposed windows are extruded fiberglass. They're wood on the interior and then the fiberglass on the next.
Selected fiberglass rather than all wood or aluminum plant or?
Or that that was actually the intent there was for something that was a little bit less for maintenance was the intent for for my client.
Fine, well, we'll open it up for public comment. We'll first ask for anyone remotely who is interested in speaking. Please do your name, your address and speak no longer than two minutes possible. Anyone not in this room would like to speak.
And while we're waiting for that, I just, Andy Port, I just wanted to ask if everybody could just make sure you're speaking up. It sounds like my understanding is the audience is still in the store. Just want to make sure the folks can hear us. Don't see any hands raised in the audience at this time, Chair, from the
Fine, okay, well, then we'll bring it back into the leading room. Is there anyone here who would like to speak? Please come to the podium so that we can capture your voice and give the name, your address.
Jill Goddard, I live at twenty two Center Street, right next door to the property. Can you hear me?
Not very well.
Jill Goddard, twenty two Center Street, right next door to the property. And I'm grateful that this project is getting underway because it has been quite a high spot to live next door to the past few years. Both Ms. Eadie and Ms. Raff are very responsive to the questions that I submitted over the weekend to them. And I still have additional questions, however, with regards to the mixed use. First off, the building to date for many years was occupied by one of the attorneys. I think you probably know Chris Welsh. He had been there for a number of years. And he had rented space in the building for other attorneys. It was, you know, daytime use. There were traffic issues even with just Chris being there because of no parking, clients coming to visit, often parking in front of our driveway, our neighbor's driveway, trying to find spaces to go. So there's still that remains a concern about the mixed use and what that retail and office space could entail that we are, as neighbors, are very concerned about. Also, with regards to the number of residents that you can see that live in the building as well as the retail and office space, that could generate a significant amount of trash and recycling. And while they have addressed it by having some level, which is actually the front of the building, which we find a little bit odd in that they would choose to have trash cans in the front of the building because twenty four Center Street is, that's the front of the building. They've put, you know, some fencing for trash as well as recycling right abutting our driveway, which it's not clear what the access to that recycling will be and if it will actually be sufficient. So, you know, there's concerns about that as well that we, you know, would like to have addressed. I'm trying to think, anyone else? Okay, um, that's all I can think of to write this one. So I turn it over to my husband.
Hi, I'm Tom Goddard, right next to twenty two Center Street. I have a question down in the space that you're moving back two feet from our property line. And then, but there's going to be a fence there. Correct.
Correct.
Do you know that dimension of why that space?
So
Madam Chair, you want us to answer the questions all at once, like instead of the kind of
Well, I don't know if there's anyone else who wants to speak. Well, it's Karen, why don't you just go ahead and answer it? We'll leave it there. Please, whenever you're speaking, I know it's, you want to talk directly to the person? Do you have to speak to the microphone? I'm sorry.
Thank you, Andy. So it seemed seemed best here. Currently, that fifth, that that short end of the building is essentially on the property line. When we pulled it away, you can see the dimension of two feet on the back, but then it goes closer towards three, towards the front. So
Right. How thick is the fence going to be, you know, the fence design?
So, you know, the traditional posts just for the corners. We have it currently proposed about halfway down the building and then extending towards the street for about four feet.
So four feet past the two foot seven mark?
Towards, correct, yes. So that will overlap with the building some and
And that's where you're planning on the recycling to go?
Well, we have a fenced area there as well as another area to the left of the bulkhead shown.
Okay, I'm just wondering what you really, your work about the mention there is and what they're going to be using to recycle and things like that.
Well, at that back location abutting your drive, I don't anticipate those are the big containers that we see in town, the big green ones. Those will probably be the smaller blue bins or something of the sort to allow for that kind of storage. And then up front would be the larger trash cans. You know, our idea was to hide that all with with gates for access off the Center Street face. And so keeping people off your driveway wouldn't want that to happen. So they would access that area from the Center Street face of the fence.
I knew you responded to our questions over the weekend, but where the mechanical equipment will be going? Air conditioning, mechanical?
Right. So I spoke with the my client and and some of the areas that we discussed for the for the mechanical was to see if the dimension that's by the bulkhead that says five point seven off the corner of the building there on the brick facade close to where the cursor is, a little bit lower, Andy, if you don't mind. Yes, along that wall there was an area that we could, a little closer to Center Street because there's a cellar window there. But if we go a little bit closer to center there by that five point seven, that is one area that we could have condensers come from the boat.
Attention to them.
Correct, yes. And then likewise, we saw potential room on the the back side.
Facing the ground?
Facing, potentially, we have to size them and see if this is possible on the one point seven feet there as well as where you could see the two feet on that corner. So it depends on what what they decide.
Would they be suspended off the building or on the grid?
They can be suspended from the building. On metal racks, I don't know if you've seen
Oh, yeah, I've seen them. I know what they look like.
Actually, behind my building, which is the Starbucks stuff, well, you could see them hung on the back side somewhere.
Okay, and on the back side of the building, would there be downspouts?
A lot of this is detailed that doesn't relate to the application tonight. So if you could talk, I mean, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't help us make a decision one way or the other. So if these are more details that you need to know about, could you do that offline? If you have something that that has been presented that seems like an issue that we ought to know about, that would help us make a good decision, that's what we want to hear about. So that's why I suggested some of these things would not be as relevant to us. But they're very relevant to you. You should get those answers.
So the the aspect of what the building's going to look like, the final outcome, is not of relevance to the committee? Things are going to be hung on the building and things like that?
Well.
If the answer is no, that's okay. I just, this is the first meeting I've been to like this, so I respect yes, no, whatever the answers are, that's okay.
It does, and I think it's smaller details than you really worry about.
Okay.
It's not a
Thank you for your time.
a windmill in the wrong place, it's going to be inconvenienced in any way. I think the issue around the recite, using a good, good example, the recycling and the bins and everything, that's important. And the parking, I think we should be addressing the parking. It's not anything that we can solve for you because there is this historical nonconformity that allows them not to have all the parking on site. So they are, I agree with attorney need that they are providing two additional on foot on site parking.
Excuse me, do we expect one additional because the the previous owner of the building, he did keep a, he did start a
There will be two on site. And the rest, and just so you understand, we don't have to require them to have all of that on site because of the existing condition. As far as people parking in front of your driveway, that is a neighborhood issue that, you know, I don't know if you want to do something. And I don't even know what to suggest, but that's not nothing that I'm sorry. So I just wanted to clarify what we can control. Yes.
I just have one more, just in terms of better understanding what is relevant for you all. In terms of this being again the front of the building. So it is an unusual building, right, where the side door is actually on Middle Street and the front of the building is on Center Street. And just again, asking the committee to please take into consideration the front of the house. And as you walk around downtown, what you may see in the front of the house, you don't normally see areas for trash receptibles. You don't normally see HVAC beam that's hanging from the building. So I think that's where, you know, we'd appreciate some more education and what are the things that you are focused on in terms of the approvals for the permitting so that we can make sure that that front side of the building is going to be aesthetically pleasing in downtown district.
Good evening. Jeff Shanti is twenty eight Liberty Street, unit number five. My wife Joan here, we're on the corner of Zinn Center. I did want to bring up a couple of issues and I know you, I talked about the whole parking situation, but it is a concern because there was previous parking on that lot, whether or not it meant the specific nine by eighteen to be considered official parking. It was being utilized as parking.
I'm sorry, I have pretty good hearing and I really can't
I'm sorry, I have pretty good hearing and I really can't, sorry. Could you speak up? I think.
Sure.
I'm really surprised.
So the.
I don't have to ask at the screen, but maybe it's dry.
The site, as it was being used before, did have parking on it. It didn't meet the nine by eighteen official parking, but there had been parking. So I don't really feel it's a creation of two new parking spaces based on the fact that there was being parking utilized there. In addition, while it is a business mixed use over there, it was a professional business before and it had patrons that were coming in based off of appointments. And so now it being changed to retail, it's definitely a change in use which is going to impact parking over there. And parking definitely along middle or along center, along Liberty is an issue. And so I do think that their plan needs to address what is going to be done to basically address the issue of going from a professional scheduled business to a retail where there's no, it's just walk-ins. And we have had issues, as we've said before, as you had brought up, with people parking in front of our driveway. And while that does need to be addressed locally, I'm not sure what else we can do about it besides make sure that anything new or, or changed doesn't negatively impact that. And I see this plan as being negatively impacting it, adding retail in with us currently not retail in this plan right now.
Yes, please, I'm sorry. Hello, I'm John Shanti, 28 Liberty Street, and my husband just spoke. So I wanted to ask a couple of questions. But first, I'd like to say the improvement on the building is well portrayed. The brick building is definitely a piece of architect we want to restore and we want to keep because it's an absolutely beautiful building and it has been neglected. The addition to the building, as we can see in the pictures, is not, it's actually deters from the beauty of the neighborhood and from the building. But I did do a little research online and I looked at what that building was intended for. And it looks like it was once a garage, so that there was additional off-street parking at that addition. And I'm thinking, if they're going to have residential units, why wouldn't they put garages there that were once there? So I was wondering, was that an option, that a garage could be put where there was once a garage that was once made into storage? So that addition was not ever intended to be living space or retail space. It was a garage that was then turned into storage. So what's the potential of maybe having a garage there that it was originally built past? Does anyone know that or can answer that? Because then you would make more adequate parking and restore to what the parking was before there were so many cars on the street and before it was residential, where there was only ever one car there. I worked during COVID from my house and I looked out my bedroom window and it was maybe one car there, maybe a couple of hours a day. Now we're talking about having two spots that it's only 17 feet wide and people backing into a one-way narrow street. And so it just doesn't add up in my mind to what it was. And the improvement is not an improvement. It's actually a detriment to the building and the people living in the area.
So the proposal is to have mixed use. And I think everybody can see through photographs. Of course, you couldn't fit two cars in the existing conditions, which are significantly old. You can see the size of the trees. That tree is much older than 50 years. I mean, I can't even tell how old that tree is.
So I actually, I think the neighbor actually told me it wasn't weed that grew kind of crazy wild and for Middle Street groups. And so I don't really know if it's 50 years, but maybe it's been 30 years.
Let's let attorney D answer first. So I don't, there are, there's a number of changes of uses that exist in the building. And what we've used for gross square footage is both the assessors' records and affirmed by the zoning code enforcement officer. So the existing use under the city zoning ordinance requires 12 parking spaces for that use. No matter how busy or not busy, it's been over the last two years because of COVID and because of Chris going down to, to one attorney or 10 attorneys. It doesn't matter. That's how it's decided. So the idea was not to build a garage there, which would detract from the building and still have cars there. You're still parking cars in a garage, which is the, we're trying to park two cars on the property, just not in a garage. So I don't, it's, it's not part of the plan. We didn't think it was appropriate, you know, it didn't, it wasn't part of the design. And we think it actually takes away from the character of the building.
So we'll sit down now. Well, I'd like the consideration given that maybe there would be a garage there to go back to the existing, how that addition that was with that single window was built as a garage for the purpose of a garage and to have that consideration rethought in the plan. Thank you.
I would just like to also quickly know.
We're, we're not having an open conversation here.
Would you like me to come back?
Yes, please.
With regards to, I apologize, I wasn't well prepared. I worked a full day today. The, with regards to parking, again, and the concerns, just to note that Center Street as a whole probably only has about 11 spots that you can legally park in. The part of Center Street that is across from the building has a one-hour limit. And then as you cross over Liberty Street, you can park for two hours. But taking into consideration that if there are two residential units, likely with at least two vehicles each, now we're going to have at least two vehicles that now will have to be parked on Center Street, therefore restricting more of those spaces for downtown. So the overall assumptions with regards to the number of spaces that are being freed up and added, I think needs to be carefully evaluated. Thank you.
Does anyone else want to speak first? Close the public comment and bring it back into consideration. Did anyone want to comment? Yeah.
As you said, I can't believe one of my colleagues are going to have any comments, so I guess I'll find a well. Or am I mistaken? Comment about parking, am I correctly assuming that for the residents, they can, they can get resident parking stickers? Is this an area where, where they have resident parking stickers?
For the middle lots, that is possible.
I mean, for these residents, if you live, it's probably around the corner of Middle Street. Are they getting it? I can't recall.
I don't, I don't believe that the street is.
Just checking. So, yeah, I, I do think that the parking will be exacerbated by two residential units. However, in my opinion, it, it's, it's something that is not necessarily a significant increase in parking. I do think there will be some more arguments, one, one automobile or residential. I tend to kind of think two, I'm not sure of the at least two, I would agree with, probably two makes sense. So there's, there's two spots there. So, yeah, I think that if you look at 1:00 in the morning, there'll probably be two more cars parking there that you see now. But I don't view that as something that is too detrimental or significantly detrimental in there. I guess no other comments, but let's just stop right now.
So any other comments on parking?
I think that you have to keep in mind that it's, we have to look at this from the point of view of what our zoning ordinance requires. And the presentation was that your current move requires 12 parking spaces. It's not conforming. They provide arguably one parking space. Parking in your suburb, short by 11 spaces right there. And under the proposed use, as I understand it, the zoning would require seven spaces and we're dividing two, so there would be short five. So we're going from a case where there are short 11 spaces to replace what we're, we're the short five spaces. So in terms of zoning, regardless of whether that's what the, what the actual reality is, if the building were filled, if the existing use were filled, generally 12 cars worth of parking demand, there would be a shortfall of limited spaces, going to a shortfall of five spaces. So from a zoning point of view, which is what we really need to, the primary thing we need to look at, you're improving the parking situation considerably. And whether that's reality or, you know, it's arguable. But I think we have to keep in mind that that's one of the things we're looking at, that we say is a reduction in the non-conformity, a reduction in the zoning shortage of parking spaces. So, and then the other point, I guess I just, I'll hold on, that's my point.
Any other comments about parking? I'm just add to it. The other side of that picture is the reality. And the South End, many of those streets are one-way and have many more residential units on than this one does overall. I, I've counted up Center Street compared it to any of the other, say, just one-way streets in the South End. But it would seem that there are fewer residential units there than some of the other streets nearby. And people vanish somehow. And some houses have no off-street parking at all. So that's the practical reality that we need to have. So Don, you want to go on with some other topics?
Sure, I mean, to the applicant, would you want to just take a minute or so and explain to me, are you, with respect to the addition that you're building, is your plans to, just for that addition, to meet the stretch energy code or to exceed it? And if you are going to exceed it, you have even a feel of how much fairer you would exceed it, as an example? Would it be that part, would that be pass-through style as an example?
I have, I can confidently say that would meet the stretch energy code. That would be sort of standard in, in the new construction build. If, once we get into the brick building, we'll apply as much as we can to the roof in there. That will be living space on the top level. So, so we will bring insulation levels up from what it currently is. So we will be improving on the brick portion of the, of the structure as well.
But just, just so, would you agree with the following statement that for the addition, you will meet the code? You're not, because the code is the stretch energy code for, not exceeding. So that's your knowledge of this, of this?
So that's to my knowledge.
The second question I have, actually, I do think Middle Street, as I walk, I live in the South End, I do think Middle Street to me is more of the front of, of the house. Having said that, walk south, east, or west, excuse me, you will see that use, something similar to that. I, I know there's an existing, I think, wooden bulkhead. So I would ask, is, if this is a, this bulkhead be, hopefully will be about the same profile, will not necessarily be higher, because I do think it would distract from the landscape, street state, Center Street. Secondly, I don't think there's an existing fence there, there now. I think it's just a tree or something. So that looks nice, but I, I will say that there was no fence there and there's no place for recycling. I just think it would look significantly better. Having said that, I don't, I think, you know, if you don't have the space to put it, it's also, it makes sense.
So to answer your question about the bulkhead, yes, we would just be repairing and restoring that area there. There's a lot of deterioration of the current doors. So we would not, the intent wasn't to change the pitch or have something larger in bulkhead form. And then in regards to the fencing, yes, that's correct. There's a, I would say a scrubby little bush there currently. And while we could, we could place, we could place trash bins, like you see in this photograph, out and in the open, but I felt that, we felt that the fencing was more attractive and would, yes, change the landscape as we know it, as we all turn that corner many times in our day. But, but I think it would be more attractive than having the bins exposed. But we would keep it low, lower than the sills that are shown in those double huts.
But I agree. Again, you, I think you haven't done, hadn't performed final design, but I think your intent is, or, or the optionality was just put some of the condensing units, the HVAC in that fenced area too.
Randy, did you have another question?
Well, I guess I had a comment, which is, and I have another, I guess I have a comment and I have a question for the panel. My comment was to do with the, the question about the garage. And I think that people who are in the audience should recognize that we can't ask for a different project than the applicant requests of us. The applicant is presenting us a plan and we have to decide on that plan. Can't, we can't kind of proactively ask for one part of the project to be replaced. So I just wanted the public to be aware of that. I guess my question for Andy was, with all this discussion about the trash containers, the trash closure, as you say, we have three applications before us right now. But none of them really deal, to, to my mind, is, it's cycles. Unless I'm mistaken, it seems like this is really about the building per se. How much of our authority here extends beyond the building into places like a trash enclosure?
Yeah, I, I do think here that you have more, you have the ability to look at those issues on the same because of the non-conformity that's been changed here. And you weren't as fresh as a board to look at that. You have the ability to look at that as an aspect of this project in addition to the architecture itself.
So, so in that regard, we could say, if we, if it was our, if it was our joint decision, we could say, we don't like that trash enclosure. Put the barrels somewhere else.
Agreed. And discuss with the applicant how that might be, yeah.
Want to go down that road?
No, no, I just wanted, I wanted to clarify what I put the extent of our.
Just use that as an example. Yeah, because normally that would be on the side. Yeah, we have a jurisdiction, not to, to say, always listed as one of the criteria.
As, as it relates to front of the building, side of the building, and some of the interests that we're talking about, could you just describe as we're looking at this, where are the retail, where are the front door, where are the residential rooms? How many bedrooms are in the residential? Could you just help us understand a little bit more about this?
So in using this rendering, if we looked at the brick portion that's closest to Middle Street, those two windows, yes, thank you. And as you can recall, the entry off of Middle Street is the door with the two storefronts. So that enters those two, the space behind those two windows on the first floor. And, and that is one office space. And then if we, hidden by, by the projection of the L of the brick building, is the door with the fan light and the side lights. And that is another entry that will remain. And that will be the entry to the second floor space of a residential unit above the office I just spoke of. And then it will occupy the second floor of where Andy's cursor is right there. And that's a residence in there with two bedrooms. Then travel down, you see the two doors that are in the wooden structure. The left door will be an entry to the second office space, office retail. And that's the space behind the bulkhead and fencing there, those, that. And that's the space behind the bulkhead and fencing there, those, that exactly. And that's a small office space. And then the last door, furthest to the right, that is a doorway to the second residential unit, which is the space up above. So that enters into a stairwell and that will get you up to a one bedroom.
So just a clarification, it sounded like you were using the word office for retail.
Sorry, commercial retail?
Yeah, so I, I'm wondering if you really mean it to be an office or is it going to be more commercial and sale? And there's three of those units in the fire station.
Just two. Well, it's nine hundred and fifty-five square feet in total. The office retail space is nine hundred and fifty-five square feet in total. So the thought is it would be two spaces. It could be one if there was somebody that came in for it, but the thought is that it would be two spaces. And it would be either for office or retail use, both uses are allowed, it's part of the mixed use, they have the same, all the same calculations. So we didn't, we don't, there's no tenant yet, right?
So it's, it's possible that it'll be used as offices like it was before.
Could be, absolutely could be. I mean, quite frankly, that space is, it's not really attractive, it's not big enough for retail space. But maybe somebody has something small, I don't know.
How about parking in front of this wooden structure? Is that going to be designated a signage, like is it for the residential or is it fluid throughout the day?
No, it's going to be for the residents. And this is going to be condominium association, so it'll be condominium documents that'll include rules and regulations and who gets right to those parking spaces and all of that.
And to Heather's point, would be a discreet sign, I would say, resident parking.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I don't know that they would have to have that, but yes, it would be designated somehow. I don't know that we want signs on the building there, but it would be, you know, maybe in the, in the bricks or something like that. But it will be very clear, certainly on site plans will be very clear. The condominium site plans will be very clear about who has, and it will be for the residential units.
What's the depth of that parking area from?
And if you can go to the site plan, seventeen.
Well, it's attorney need with all of the clients out. Or something pops out at you from what she said. So at this point, there's no further discussion. We could take a motion on all, we can combine. Oh wait, I just want to point out one other thing. The applicant appears to trigger the tree and sidewalk ordinance. This decision, as per usual, contains the standard tree and sidewalk, sidewalk ordinance, oil and plate condition requiring compliance. So we have a draft motion here that someone, one of the members to make for, just make it there, read it, please. One second, John, go for it.
Motion to approve the DOD special permit, make sure you special permit, special permit for many applications submitted for twenty-four Center Street Corporation of Jeffine, tonight, as provided by the office, planning and development.
One second.
One second.
Any further discussion? Andy, do I have to do real questions since we're still on your line? Official alphabetical order. Alden?
Yes.
Beth? Yes.
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Bonnie? Yes.
Thank you very much. It's great to see all of you.
All right, we're going to move to the twenty-two Market Street ITIF special permit request. Someone here to text.
Yes, good evening.
So it was the applicant, tell us who you are and go for it.
It provides hard copies of my presentation in case you prefer to look at paper instead of screen. Oh, good evening. Madam Chairmembers of the board, good evening. My name is Douglas Deschanel. I'm an attorney with Finner and Nicholson here in Newburyport. I'm here this evening representing Down East Residential LLC. And just to let you know, Everett Chandler is our engineer on the project, and Scott Brown is the architect. I'll just give you a quick project summary. The developers would like to convert the property from its current use as a lodging home, a house to a new use as an inn. We have no opportunity currently to provide additional parking on the site. And as determined by the zoning enforcement officer, the planned conversion would require a special permit. Would require a special permit under section, from this board, under section seven A of the City of Newburyport zoning ordinance for non-residential off-site parking of one space. Go to the next slide, please. Just to give you a quick overview, I know this, all of this isn't germane to the question.
As a matter of fact, I'd like to mention that. Can we move just to your request?
Sure.
Because we don't need to see all the dimensionals that you'd be doing with the zoning board.
Yes, correct.
And this is just about, anything you want to tell us why you need this parking permit?
Very good. I, I will do that.
You get a chance to present all of this.
Oh, I, I know. So quickly then, my client's proposing to convert the building to an inn. We currently, in order to do so, we are required to have one additional space. We have no space on the site to create one. So we're looking for a special permit to be able to utilize a space within the garage at the corner of Market and, excuse me, Merrack and Tinkum Streets under your Intermodal Transportation Improvement Fund donation. So, and if we could just skip to the, to the, to the last slide, and I do apologize for presenting too much, but that one. So just to let you know, we have filed all our other applications with other boards, and we will be appearing before them. We are seeking special permit from you to allow one required space to be off-site within the municipal garage, as I stated, at Merrack and Tinkum Streets. And, and looking at the regulations and what is required, first of all, our use structure, we're lawfully existing as of December seventeenth, two thousand seventeen. The site is currently located within three hundred feet of the municipal parking structure that is located in the DOD, which is a requirement under your regulations. The off-site parking requirement applies to only one space, which we are required to add for our proposed use. And the requested use is, in our, in my opinion, essential or desirable to the public convenience or welfare. Quite frankly, restoring this building and restoring the building next to it to its former residential use, and then restoring the inn, I think will, is very desirable for public convenience. Certainly, we have a great need for housing, not housing, but so much as, you know, places for people who are here lodging, for people who are here to visit or and to enjoy the city. And being able to have this space available in the municipal parking garage, which is located nearby, is great convenience, not only for our, 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 our future guests, but also for the city in general. So I think it's great that the city has this program, given the fact that many of our in-town businesses are so restricted in size and, and traffic. And so I do believe that this request and this project that we're proposing is, is actually directly on point on why this regulation was created. So we would like your consideration in allowing us to make the requisite contribution to the, to the Intermodal Transportation Improvement Fund for one space, so that we will meet the parking requirements when we appear before the zoning board for our other permits. I'd be happy to answer any of the questions, provide you any other information, and I do appreciate your time.
Let's see if there's any public comment, is there any remotely?
And so the first person we have is Tom Calderjohn, if you'd like to address the board.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Tom Calderjohn, hello? John, sixty-four Federal Street. Co-president of the Newburyport Preservation Trust. I know the focus is on parking tonight, but I would like to compliment the developers and their architect Scott Brown for reaching out to the trust in order to preserve the visible historic features of this building. We support their efforts to preserve these features. And willingly incorporated our suggestions into the plan that you see before you. I won't go over that list, but it's extensive. I just wanted to give you a brief idea of the positive aspects of this project. In addition, the trust supports bona fide inns and hotels in Newburyport's business districts to support tourism without disrupting purely residential historic areas. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Chair, I see your other hands raised at this time.
Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak? We'll close with public comment, bring it back in. Any questions or comments from the board? The only one I have as to do with draft special condition in our staff report that this would be required payment into the city fund. And there's a question whether it should be before the issuance of the building permit or before the occupancy permit. Does any board member have a preference on that one?
Chair, I think the question in the, in the I see, I think, I think, I would think.
Yeah, if I could. I mean, I think the most consistent review that is under the building permit is, as I noted, the reason I think that we try to structure it this way is the recognition that you can probably see similar instances like this in the future. Although this board hasn't seen it quite as much as the zoning board appeals, there's a similar type of condition in the board that requires the boards to look at sidewalk and trees conditions. And so our aim here was to try and provide you a draft condition, one that would be similar in structure to that one, where it says that the applicant must comply with that provision, but recognizes that they may not right now be applying for that permit and that type of permit. And so in here, they'd be required to show the zoning administrator, apply for the building permit online. The zoning administrator would have to verify that payment is paid. Finance office, essentially, and, and then that could be done. The reason why we had put and/or opposite permit is just recognizing that it might be instances in the future where you're asked to grant this permit, but there is just a change of use happening as opposed to building construction. So we thought it would make sense to use that phrasing or consistency moving forward. Yes, it's the building permit that in this instance is.
But in this instance, couldn't we just leave the and/or since we know exactly?
I, I think that's.
Well, that's why I asked the question, because I wanted to be on the board together. And I like the idea that, from the staff report, that it comes to us like this. Because certain situations, for other kinds of permits, as Andy was intimating, we might want to leave it to occupancy. And we've had lots of experiences with other conditions where it was clearly more advantageous to wait for occupancy because it was unrealistic, just old things up. If it had to be approved, had to be implemented at the building apartment stage. So I think we're all in agreement with them that given this type of application, payment can be made at the time of, just before it can be.
So if I understand correctly, in this instance, if the board is approving this special condition, it would be removing the phrase and/or occupancy permit.
Yes.
And also from the, the calculation, yeah.
Exactly, in the early state, yeah. The reference, yeah, put a period after seven. That draft special condition reads, prior to issuance of a building permit for the proposed project, the required ITIF payment shall be possible with the city in accordance with section seven A of the code, proof of such payments submitted as part of the application for said permit. And that's where it should.
Well, I think that you still need to have a calculation.
Okay, the ITIF, in the early CPI, in those reference. And the sentence is not finished.
Or should be calculated in the early state application for building. Because what happens is it's seventy-five hundred dollars plus four or five years of application.
Right, right. Well, yeah, we'll adjust the phrasing accordingly to take that up.
So with that one condition, I'll take a motion to to approve the application as drafted and the person.
To approve the ITIF special permit applications in the twenty-two to twenty-four Market Street. The incorporation of draft findings and special condition review tonight is provided by the office of planning and development to the board's decision accordingly.
Right. Could I have a second, please?
One second.
I'll take all on that. Alden?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Bonnie? Yes. Have your.
Well, thank you very much. That's step one. Look forward to meeting with your zoning board. Thank you very much.
And we'll move right along to our third public hearing, which is East Row Condominium Association, looking with zero East Row, requesting a downtown overlay district special permit. We have a remote presenter, I believe.
Rob and Matt are with us.
Matt is here.
Here.
Rob, you'll also unmute on your. Rob, I see you having a mute on your end of the mic as far as. If you happen to be having any issues, maybe we'll use the calling number. Matt, I don't know if you feel comfortable giving any overview without Rob's participation. I, Rob, I don't know if you're, if you're able to use a dialing number, perhaps you can.
I can certainly give you an overview. Oh, there he is. Is that Rob?
No, Rob appears to be still muted on his end. I will be checking here to see if he comes in phone line or something.
Okay, guys, sorry about that, little technical.
Randy, we hear you now.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Sorry, sorry for the, for the disconnect. You would think that I would know how to operate Zoom by now on the, on public here. Okay, so I want to just take a quick moment and introduce myself and Matt Carlton, if he's already here. Matt, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you fine.
Great, thank you. Well, good, good evening, members of the planning board, and thank you for hearing us. This is a continuation of our, I, I serve as, my name is Rob Champetti, and I serve as one of the board members of the condominium trust. East Row is the applicant that was originally before the new, the Newburyport Historic Commission on February twenty-fourth, seeking an advisory review under twenty-five, twenty-seven F of the Newburyport zoning ordinance as part of the downtown overlay district, the DOD. We seek before the planning board this evening a special permit review for, and historic masonry that is connected to the installation of a new brick veneer overcladding system to the existing brick party walls above the roof level to remedy a water leak issue at. to the existing brick party walls above the roof level to remedy a water leak issue at the East Row building in one, one particular residential unit just below that faces the market square, Water Street elevation. The applicant, East Row Condominium Association, has provided the NHC with the leak evaluation report, which was provided by, which, which was provided by RJ Kenny and Associates. And Matt Carlton is the, the engineer and expert that had performed much of that, much of that detail as well. And I trust the board has that before it is part of the process. So through essentially the last probably five years, in particular since a recent 2019 renovation, where many of the board members or perhaps some of the board members may recall, there was scaffolding that, that shrouded the entire East Row during that period of time in 2019. We, the board had authorized a very expensive renovation project to cure what we thought were all of the leaks and all of the separate parapit, including all of the party walls, all of the parapet party walls, the that are between the party walls. And this project included repointing of the brick on much of the facade as well as the roof and the parapet. And we were able to solve almost all of the leaking, but what that effort demonstrated was here the last, hopefully the last remaining vestige of roof leaking exists. So we're chasing that down now. We've identified through the help of, of, of Mr. Carlton and his analysis and leaking out, leak evaluation report, we know exactly which parapits remain still breached. And this project, we seek to overlay veneer that will resemble the 1970 era brick facade won't be detectable in success from the street or, or elsewhere. And we, we wanted to see historic commissions first. So if I can just walk through quickly, the, the sheets that are part of the elevations that we provided the Newburyport Historic Commission, you've got a sheet A10100. This is the, the application. In this, East Row as an applicant shows the scope of work outlined in red. There are three parapet walls in particular, actually, I'm sorry, two parapet walls in particular. There's a third red dotted line that is in A102. It's really stucco re-veneering on the rear of the building that faces the parking lot. And it's not part of this application because that portion of the building is not, that repair work is not within the DOD. But in sheet 101 and 102, so that's, I'm sorry, 102 is what's up. 101 shows the proposed masonry party wall elevations. And, and I believe the detail was outlined in the, in the Newburyport Historic Commission's advisory opinion in more detail. So I won't belabor that by, by reiterating it. I just refer the board members and Madam Chair to that detail. It defines exactly what the issue seemed to be with respect to that brick veneer work. It was one of the things where we just didn't know where the, where the weakest part of the chain was until we fortified every other link of the chain. And what, what's left is what remains, and that's what we seek to cure here. We've also, as a board, the East Row Condominium Association has collected a series of photos and a photo library that's part of this application that shows the existing conditions. And thank you, Andy. These are the parapet walls that, that reflect the, the overcladding and step flashing that exists as well as the brickwork and the pointing work. And the issues are that the brick doesn't seem to Mr. K, I'll say that Mr. Carlton will be able to go into more detail in a moment on this, but I just wanted to walk through the general overview and then defer to, to the expertise of RJ Kenny and Associates and, and Mr. Carlton. But these photos show the existing conditions, and we can go to slide 18, slide 17, Andy. This shows the depth of the repointing work up in these parapet areas and a closer examination of this brick. Just as a point of information, this brick on these parapet are circa 1970 following the, the urban renewal project. The brick that is in the lower elevations are all more period to the circa 1811 era and the era that follows. So this brick was built in place to as closely resemble the, the hue and color of the brick that's period. If we can go to slide 18, Andy, thank you. And this is looking down, of course, onto the market square bulldozers and then Water Street as it rounds toward, toward sea, sea level. And we're looking through the skylight and one of the party walls that in particular is causing most of the, of the leaking in the unit below. And it's a residential unit and the only one that remains, unfortunately for that owner, that still has been suffering water infiltration. You'll see at the very bottom photo, that's part of the, the work that Matt Carlton had performed over the course of, of, of his, his leak evaluation. And that's in an extended water exposure test that was going on. And it was to help, to help sort of galvanize for us, well, for our experts, and then trickle down to us as a board, exactly what was going on in our, you know, our, our very delicate and fragile building. And to be able to shore it up so that it can last, you know, several hundred more years. If we can go to the next slide, Andy, or I believe that's the last slide. This last slide shows what we propose as part of the brick veneer process. This is a very thin veneer and, and Matt Carlton will go into more detail about the installation details and the technical installation process. But this is a product called Bricket. It's a thin veneer product that when installed will, will create just a slight protrusion around the parapet in question. It should be undetectable even up close in terms of the aperture of the parapets. You'll notice that the, and hopefully members have had the opportunity to take a look at the samples I've left at the planning department, the planning office. This is a very thin product, and we have done our best as a board to try to select the, the most, the closest facsimile in terms of hue, color, and, and, you know, movement of the brick. And this one is called Tavern Flash. And the, this is the, this is the product that we believe to be the closest match. And once installed, we believe that it would be utterly undetectable from, certainly from the ground as that is most important to us, and I believe equally important to the Historic Commission, to the planning board, and for all of the aesthetic reasons that I believe we share to the community. As this is a very central and prominent architectural asset of our, our cities downtown. So we are very, very sensitive to that aesthetic and are adamant to ensure a, a result that is nothing short of as close as possible to the real McCoy. So with that, I'd like to just defer to Mr. Carlton, who has been very patient. I believe he's logging on from, I'm sorry to say, from his family vacation in Florida. So, you know, I apologize to him, but I'm very grateful that he's here. And we as a board are very grateful for his expertise. And with that, Matt, if you could just walk them through the detail.
Yeah, hi, guys. So basically, what you have up there, you have the party walls. And those party walls typically are multi-wife bricks. In this instance, you don't have multi-lives. You only have an outer life, a large inner basically collar joint that goes right down to the tenant unit below where their roof structure is embedded into that inner life. So basically, there's no backup, there's no real mass there to collect the water. So what we're proposing to do is take the existing masonry that's there and apply a coating over it, a breathable masonry coating that will cover the brick, that will be waterproofing. And through discussions with the historic committee, we've decided to provide a drainage layer over that waterproofing and then provide this thin brick system, which is only going to protrude out a half to three quarters of an inch around every single side and over the top of these so that it would be completely encapsulated. Water could never even get to this thing brick system to go into this unit anymore. And any water that does get in is allowed to drain out at the base if you go to, looks like number 15 there. You'll, if you go to page 15, whoever's running this thing. There you go. Yeah, so you'll see basically everything that's in gray and all the work. No, that's not, that's not the one. If you could go back up, yeah, up to the top there. There you go. Yes, you'll see the gray, all the gray portions are existing. It's work that we've already provided. All of the existing through wall flashings and things that are there are going to remain. And we're going to basically the brick, like we said, provide a drainage mat in the back and then affix the brick through that drainage mat. So you have a surface condition that should be imperceptible from even on the roof, but certainly from the street. And we're going to provide waterproofing along the top, the coping, which is suspect also now for leaking. And we're going to provide aluminum coping over the top to finish it in the same manner that it is completed in other areas of the building. So we're not doing anything that's any different than anywhere else. And we're going to keep water off of that existing brick so that it can't be absorbed into this unit anymore.
Thanks very much, Matt.
Was that sound good?
I believe that is it. Thank you very much, Matt. And so, members of the planning board and Madam Chair, basically, we're, we're before you this evening in the second step of the, the process by which we seek a special permit under the downtown overlay district for, in order to, as, as expeditiously as possible undertake these very critical water, water repairs. And I believe that you may already have heard from members of our, our Board of Health as well, who are involved in working with us in lockstep. Because, of course, the, the infiltration of water into these residential spaces creates a bit of a, an urgency, especially for the unit owners that live in that space. So we, as a board, as a condo board, are trying to move as quickly as possible, but as credibly as possible to, to find the right solution, to do the right documentation and research to move through what we hope is a successful permitting process so that we can undertake the work to, to create this last remaining vestige of our, of a large 2019 repair of this fragile but prominent building. With that, we thank you for your time and certainly welcome questions that you may have.
Thank you. Any comments, questions for board members?
I have one question. One of the challenges with thin brick system like this is turning corners. And if you're trying to represent the, the traditional brick dimensions and how bricks, as you can see in the photo up there, how bricks turn corners. This is a thin material. How, how do you turn corners with this so that represents real brick dimension?
The, this brick system comes with preformed corners. I, I understand what you're saying. It, it's made and molded in, in
I made things to mention that before, correct?
Yes. It should, it should look exactly the same as what's up there now.
Because if, if we look at your plan details, it didn't represent that. The detail
I'm pretty sure. This might have been one of my drafters.
I don't see bricks.
Yeah, we could forward you that information. I'm, I'm 90, I don't have any of my information with me, unfortunately. But I'm 90% sure these come with preformed corners.
Be 100% sure.
I think I would be 100% sure. That's
I don't know what brick we used for the garage, but I know that we, the exact model, we used a sample we have, but we used a similar to this and we had the preform corners.
I know it exists. I'm asking a question because the detail doesn't show that straight. So I just want to make sure that they're paying attention to that. Then I'm asking because the ends of these walls are very visible from the street. And it's, it's a detail that would jump out. It's really
I, I, I can jump in for a moment as well with respect to that. And, you know, our, our overall goal, no matter what it takes, and, and if you knew the expense we've sort of undertaken to this point in the interest of architectural integrity and, and aesthetic, we will, we'll do whatever is needed to make sure that that looks appropriate. Because obviously, the slightest departure from that would undermine the whole integrity of the, the effort we're taking now. We want it to look correct, but also be correct, which is a, an interesting blend when you deal with, you know, a building of this heritage, you know, in a modern, in, in our modern time.
Thank you.
I failed to call for public comments. Let me do that right now. Is there anyone remotely who would like to comment?
I'm sorry, this is Matt Carlton. I have, I'm on their website, and it has corner bricks.
Great. Thank you so much for that confirmation.
Sure.
Okay, well, a public comments, and the first person we see is Stephanie Nikic.
Thank, thank you, Chair Sontag. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can, and we can.
Stephanie Nikic, 93 High I asked the planning board to engage applicant's expense for new construction and alterations, taking all hired specialized consultant. Issues report and recommend facilitation of the fire on this structure. There are several uncomfortable things about this application. One, what I know from city records and community present concerns, this prominent and significant building has already twice gone through brick-related work to deal with water related problems. Once in 2015 and again in 2019. Both were fixes made without benefit of specialized advice and indeed appeared not worked. Number two, although the Historic Commission otherwise, their public deliberations included for consideration of the Secretary of the Superior Standards of the DOD criteria required under the DOD. Their advisory report and additional commentary was discussed in their public meeting. Number three, during the commission's public advisory review, the Newburyport Preservation Trust, Tom Calderjohn, provided requested comment that was not discussed at all by the commission. Mr. Calderjohn testified in summary that the proposed solution is simply covering the problem and not resolving the basic issues. That putting a thin veneer of fake brick over real brick would look awful. And it's hard to imagine that this solution would last when a traditional approach would be much better. Finally, as a resident, I find it discomfiting. Sitting in the applicant at the Historical Commission was Rob Champetti, who was also the chair of the ZBA. I realized for this application, the ZBA had no permit granting authority. But the ZBA and NHC chairs have a regular regulatory relationship because given the building's recent history of questionable NHC review of the your review is worse.
Thank you, Stephanie. Some of your sound was a little bit hard to hear, but I think we gathered everything you were saying. So thank you.
Tom Calderjohn?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. Uh, Tom Calderjohn, sixty-four Federal Street, co-president of the Newbury Port Preservation Trust. I did read the entire test report and viewed the photos. I've not, not been up on that roof since the late sixties or seventies. But I was up on the roof back then. We are talking about modern brick that was replaced and they used Portland cement on these firewalls during urban renewal. Portland cement is notorious for trapping moisture and cracking, especially on the edges when it dries. It is clear from reading the report that conditions are a problem. Test three says the flashing buckled and the mortar is cracked. Test six says the pointing mortar was spalled, creating a void. Test nine says the mixed surface was cracking. With conditions like that, it's certainly is understandable why it leaks. Flashing is an issue along the entire firewall. It is not step flash. There seem to be layer after layer of caulking and we all know that caulking never lasts. One concern is what they did to the brick to get that length of straight flashing. It looks like they took a saw and cut a groove for the flashing along the whole length of the firewall. So if that groove for the flashing is compromised anyplace, then it becomes like a little highway for water. I have personally never seen flashing installed this way last very long. The traditional method of step flashing has stood the test of time. And it enables you to pinpoint better and stop any leaking. Clearly, this firewall has issues of various kinds, many of which have been pointed out by the RJ Kenny report. My main concern is the proposed solution. It seems like simply covering the problem, not resolving the basic problems. Visually, the current firewall looks beautiful from a distance. Putting a thin veneer of fake brick over real brick would look awful. It is hard to imagine that this solution would last when a more traditional approach seems much better and longer last. Thank you.
Thank you.
See, no other hands raised at this time.
No other hands. Okay. Uh, is there anyone in the room who would like to speak? Yes, please send it to the comments.
I'll just say a couple of quick remarks. My call, uh, from the Department of Health Department, I'm the office manager. And I went out to this apartment with the building commissioner and building inspector back. I want to say February, it was right after our health director left, at some point around February. Um, I understand the goal is to look at the look, but I also just want to bring the concern about the resident's living situation to your attention. She currently sleeps with plastic over her beds. She sent us videos of what looks like a waterfall coming down both of her walls. She can't use her closet. She hangs everything from door handles and it's a very bad living condition, especially with mold. We did look through the skylight, um, and the building commissioner and inspector, both, and the health department have worked with the engineering company and condo board to look at the solution. And we think this is something that's not only gonna help save time, especially, you know, with rain, um, coming in the spring, but also get the resident back to a living condition that is healthy for her and the building as a whole. Because it's also leaking at the one other apartment, but not as bad. Just want to bring that to your attention as well. Thank you.
Anyone else? Close the public comment portion. Um, I'd like to take it back to Mr. Carlton. I think I understood you to say that you were involved in the previous repairs. Um, and if that's the case, could you, uh, speak to the effectiveness of those repairs and compare what you did there to what you're proposing you do here? It's the same or different? To respond to the issue of solving the problem?
Well, the, the previous construction project we did was a, was a roof renovation. So what we did was we provided, we took all the existing roofs down to the existing, uh, original roof decks, the structural roof deck. And then we provided an insulated sheathing onto the roof decks and then a waterproofing membrane that ran up the walls. Um, and then we covered that with, um, step flashing and this counter flashing, which is let into the brick and, um, covered basically how, how it was originally. We just put it back the way that it was. And then we re-pointed the brick to try to keep as much water out there as possible because it seemed as though that every single one of these was, was leaking. And now we're left with just one unit, to my knowledge, a few years after we've completed, it's starting to leak again. And my understanding is that when we did our testing a few years after we finished the roofing work, we have areas that require maintenance. Okay, if these areas were maintained, um, you know, added or repaired, uh, spalled bricks or, or what have you. Um, then the water wouldn't get in. But the problem with these kind of buildings is that that's really difficult to be chasing the, um, these maintenance issues continuously. So we took a brick out to understand what really was going on with this particular unit. Because they have a little bit of a different construction, uh, on her roof. And it turns out that we don't have multi-wife here. We only have one waif of brick. So the second you get any kind of breach on this outer surface, water is getting in and right down into her. Um, uh, the beam pockets of her structure for her roof. So the only way to quickly do that is to cover the brick itself with a masonry coating that will allow the brick to be a barrier rather than absorb the water like it's intended to. And then we put this brick, this is actual brick. It's made like brick. You'll never notice it from the street. And, um, this is the only way that we think that we can, that we can fix this without taking apart the entire parapet, taking it down to the roof deck, putting in multi-wife walls and putting in through wall flashings. Um, which, you know, we proposed five years ago when we were starting this. But it was just way too cost prohibitive to do that. Um, this is something that in the seventies, you know, they made this problem and we're just trying to deal with it the best that we can. I've even worked on this building and I, I had to rebuild this whole back wall, this whole back corner here for through wall flashings because we were told that we had to do it by the historic committee. So I've been on this building for, uh, six or eight years. I started while I worked for Simpson, Gump, or Sonne Hager. We've done so much work here and the fact that, I don't know who said it, that this building is still, you know, uh, none of the work has worked. That is, that is just not true. We've done over all the, the rear decks. We've done everything. We have Kemper down. This building was an absolute disaster and we brought it back to ninety-five percent, you know, not leaking. So I don't know what that person was saying. I, I respect whatever they're saying, but it's just not true. So if we could just move forward and get this woman's unit to stop leaking, it would be wonderful. And I hope I answered your question. I went off on a tangent. I'm sorry.
Oh, that's good. Thank you. I wanted that whole picture because I remember when, um, this came before us before. And I was just wondering if the solution at that point is still holding. From what you said, it is. And this is the, the last, um, serious problem that has to be dealt with in a financially feasible way.
Exactly. That you said it perfectly. Sorry. Financially feasible is correct.
All right. So let me ask other board members if they have further questions, Don.
Yeah, probably a couple of comments. Um, the brick veneer was stated it was thick, you know, thin, et cetera. But when I take a look at the cross section, it's my understanding that in addition to the thickness of the veneer, you also have that wicking material. So if you actually took a look at the, uh, at the cross section, it's probably the thickness is two times the thickness of the brick veneer. Not that it's significant. I just want to be sure that we're all looking here. At least I understand that type of detail. Um, secondly, with respect to, I think the applicant said, and you summarized as well, I, and as well as, I think, some of the public comment. There are probably several ways you can do this, but I do think this is probably the, um, the applicant's most cost effective and perhaps the quickest, uh, to, uh, possibly address the concerns raised by the Department of Health. Unfortunately, the DOD, um, standards don't necessarily say cost should be a consideration. However, in this case, what I think is important, and I wanted to throw it out to the rest of us, that it's, it's somewhat addressed initially by the historic commission. And then secondly, by a letter by the Chair of the Historic Commission. And this is the process, uh, which is, so it's, you know, looks substantially the same or similar. Who's going to determine that? And as importantly, what criteria does one use? And that to me is the biggest question I have. We, I think we all agree. We don't want to go up there and see this looks different. What, by the way, what's different? Two percent difference of that? Yeah. So I, I struggle with how to go in because I think none of us want the applicant, none of us want, as well as the applicant, you don't want to have an eyesore. So I'm struggling right now to find that unless you took one little section, you know, three by three section, so that you can even order, order that spool back, put it up a mockup, you know, get the, get the cherry pickers, whatever. Okay, it looks good. Now do the rest. Outside of that, I'm, I'm struggling. How else does one confirm that it's going to look acceptable? And secondly, who's the person that says it looks acceptable? Because one may say it looks acceptable, um, and someone else may not. So I'll just throw, unfortunately, I threw out a comment without a solution. I apologize.
We wanted our, our response to that. Yeah. So let's hear what other people want to say about, you know, it's gonna look okay.
I did have that same concern because I think it's important that it does look the same. And so again, how exactly can we judge that from what we've seen? I'm not sure. The, the only other question I had, is this just one party wall that's, that's being done?
Yes.
Two of us.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
Yeah, it was the two. Okay, that's all I wanted to make sure.
Yeah, those are the units that, uh, are bound this, this woman's unit that is experiencing leakage. So we decided to just do them all, both sides.
That's, that's correct. And Madam, Madam Chair, um, this is Rob Chimpity again. May, may I have a moment to just, uh, to be heard for just a moment?
Yeah, please.
Chairman Sontag, I, I'm sorry. Could you, I can't tell, we're, we're getting quite a bit of reverberation on, on this. And I apologize. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, please go ahead.
Oh, I, I don't want to belabor this. I just want to take one moment, uh, because I feel, I feel compelled to respond only to, to, to settle the record correctly. I wasn't expecting this and I'm saddened and certainly, um, surprised, but the, the, the comment of, uh, one of, uh, I believe Ms. Nikic had made a comment that I believe I have to respond to with respect, of course. Um, and that is that I, I do not appear this evening as an attorney or a member of any public board or commission, but I, I'm just a property owner and a member of the condo association here in East Row, and I'm one of three. The other two are unavailable. I have the unenviable task of being the representative from the condo, um, board and I, and I'm happy to be here because I want to try to solve a fellow unit owner's problem. Uh, we have a responsibility to our constituency and it shouldn't matter what I do for a living or what else I do with my volunteerism. That I, I, I think my voice is, um, is well intended and I, I, I'm just saddened at the suggestion that because of where else I volunteer my time, that somehow my voice should be stifled or quieted, um, or, or devalued. But, but nonetheless, I, I, I respect and I've always respected Ms. Nikic and, and continue to, I, I, I suspect perhaps, um, it's not intended in that spirit, but I, I have to make that note because I, I get to, I, I believe I'm entitled to speak as a property owner, as a member of this board, and that's the only, the only context in which I appear with respect. And I do say that I believe a comment was made with respect to, um, the, the proposal not being consistent with the, um, the secretary's compliance with secretary's standards. And I, I apologize and respectfully, I, I have to disagree. Uh, because the, um, the, the historic commission's, um, advisory opinion was very clear in paragraph two, where it reads, uh, "The Newbury Port Historical Commission has determined that the solution is, is in compliance with the secretary's standards," though I do, um, I do, of course, agree that uh, with Ms. Nikic, with others, that it's, it might not be the most perfect solution, but we are trying to balance the equities here and we have, um, you know, we have a very, um, uh, you know, a very sort of acute issue regarding water infiltration. Uh, and as the Board of Health, um, Mr. Lawler mentioned, it's something we're trying to solve. So thank you for that. I just wanted to make that clarification. I, I'm simply here as just a resident of the city of Newburyport and as an owner of East Row and a member of that condo board.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, I wanted to respond anyway to what, uh, you brought up, Don, about whether or not it's gonna look okay. I would be much more concerned if it was, if it were closer and newer, lower down, if it were on a facade somewhere that was very, very visible. Um, given where it's located and the effort that's gone into finding, um, brick that's going to be used, I'm comfortable.
Chair.
Yeah.
Um, so that was, I don't know much of this. But looking at the, at the historical commission's, um, report. The DOD historical report. It strikes me when I see that a statement that says that the, this is the, only the, uh, before the nineteen seventy-seven rehabilitation project, only the outermost firewall is a high step through extension. Making the other firewalls in this design is conjectural rather than historically correct. So this applies to me, unless I'm reading wrong, and we don't even know what's historical about this at all. This is a nineteen seventy-seven design, it sounds like.
Yeah.
Um, so that to me, I mean, I think as long as we're getting, you know, we're solving the problem, we're doing the best that we can to make it as close to the nineteen seventy-seven design as we can get. Um, that seems to me a good objective. I, I, unless I'm totally misunderstanding.
Right.
You know, what I read, this is not necessarily historically accurate. Part of it.
Correct. If someone flies, I don't know if any of these are different.
So I'd be saying that the nineteen seventy-seven wall, which is an extension of the original garden wall, is built with a cavity rather than being a solid basically wall. Because that cavity exists as a lot of that way from water. And, you know, you, you, you'd love to say, you know, let's rewind this and, and rebuild these parapets properly as a, you know, a solid brick wall. But it seems that there are times that cost constraints related to that. I think my only question relative to the thin brick system is whether there's any kind of warranty with that system? What's, what's the life expectancy of this? And, you know, is this a problem that you will have again ten years from now? So it's a thin veneer system. By, by the very nature of those systems, they, they eventually fail. So I'm just curious what the expected longevity of the system.
Well, there's, there's backup waterproofing membrane that's going to be applied directly to the existing brick that you see up there now. So, uh, even if we have, you know, the, the mortar joints failing on this bracket system, which is actually affixed to the building through a track, there's a track system that is affixed, aluminum track system that is affixed into the building. Um, so really, there should be no failure mode that would be of any consequence, uh, on this building. Uh, so maybe in, in ten or fifteen years, you'd have to go back up and check some re-pointing, but it shouldn't even matter because the backup is waterproof.
Well, even, even roofing systems have, have a warrant. They have a life expectancy. So I'm just asking, because there is a waterproofing membrane involved in, in this overall assembly, is there a specific warranty that the manufacturer provides?
I could provide you with that information, but it's not exposed to UV, not exposed to anything. Uh, it should be a thirty-year system. I can't imagine any less. I apologize. I don't have anything. I apologize. I don't have anything in front of me.
Well, we thank you for being on vacation and being with us tonight, so that's.
I love this building and I've been warming on it for a long time, so I'm passionate about it and I want to get this done.
Okay, well, good. Let's see what we can do for you now. We have the findings, and I don't think we need to go through them because what?
Actually, yes, I do.
Have one, unless someone on the board would like to point to one and comment about it.
Yes, more than one. This is followed by the comment that was, that was made that started, when I look at some of the findings, it references the store. So it seems to me it's a bit inconsistent with respect to the comment that at least one of the members made and several of us agree with. So that's my generic comment on, on the findings. That's the thing to do.
Yeah, I think the findings as they're written are referring to the entire building rather than to the parapets themselves.
Well, except for the last, right? It says, well, I mean, I go through everyone, but the last one, page 10 here on this one. Proposed brick restoration where it applies to section of historic base street. I'm not sure why, but it's in here. It doesn't have to be historic based. So that, that, you may be right. I mean, this public could, if we need to notice, we probably would write this a little bit, but that's all. It's a big, it's not necessarily a deal breaker, so to speak, but it probably could be better a little bit. I'm more succinctly and more, that's all.
More particular to this application. Right. I, I like that point because this goes on record and I would like to place that this will be worded before I sign the decision. We'll go together.
Chair, other suggestions that, that the detail be revised to indicate how the brick wraps the end of the wall?
Okay.
Because I think dimensionally, it becomes very difficult when you add this layer to the outside. I mean, looking at a photograph, our typical brick, increase the width of that wall, it's not a typical brick. So I think we'd like to see that in detail to confirm that it will look fundamentally like the photograph.
We delegate that to the staff and then.
Yeah, if it's something a little more, we understand what the board was looking for. I think we could revise the language. To avoid a special condition, those are the pieces specifically, worded in there with the chair prior to the, sorry, the decision.
Yeah, I can call someone in my staff and have a brick and get a corner piece.
Do the findings and add that. Have a special condition without corners. Okay, so anyone, any other further discussion, additions you want to add before we take a motion? Okay. So remember, make sure the, the motion, please, add the condition as discussed.
I'm going to try. Motion to approve the U D special permit applications for East Row with cooperation. That findings reviewed tonight are reviewed and improvised tonight by my newest planning development. Or it's situated accordingly. If you feel more comfortable, also say and, and approved also by the chair of planning boards. Whatever you suppose comfortably.
And a special permit?
To include the special condition.
A special condition, sorry. And to include.
And to include special.
Condition regarding rack and floors.
Rack and floors, yes.
Would they answer your question? If I don't get off to 10, you go. Revision.
Have that in? Sorry, we, we understand.
So, and I, I want, so just for the record, I do need all the decisions. If I meant, if it's later, I usually remember what we talked about, but I need some notes on this one. May I have a second?
Second.
May to roll for the vote, Alden?
Yes.
Beth? Yes.
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
So you have your approval pending signature.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the planning board for your time this evening.
Well, thank you both.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Okay. Now, to correspondence, we have a letter from Peter Mackin regarding back in State Street. Was that included in the documentation on, anywhere? Has anybody seen it from me?
The communication was posted on our website.
Okay, so you know it's about the institution for savings and the amended request that we review the settlement agreement. We don't know when that's coming to us. It has to be sent, it's been sent back to the court and the judge will send it back to us and it's all procedural stuff. And that's what takes time. So it hasn't been put on our agenda yet because we haven't received the formal request to review it. That being said, we've been invited by a butter for anyone who wants to look at the property and how it sits within the neighborhood. And for people who have not been on the board, when this was first reviewed, by the way, we will all, it's new applicant, it's considered a new application. So we will all be eligible to review and write on it. If you would like to have a site visit, we can arrange that. It's been asked by the butters. We cannot deliberate, we cannot discuss with them anything. We just would look at it and that's true no matter whatever we make a site visit. So is there any interest in doing a formal site visit? Yeah. So there was two of you. Anybody else? All right. I'm assuming because you both work, but you don't work regular hours, especially at the end of the day. I'm just trying to give an idea so I can discuss it with what you, and you're both, and you work. So let's do this offline so we don't have to take time tonight. Let me know what days in the next couple of weeks. What times of day and I'll call. It's that butter.
Chair, if you set up a site visit, just take it up to the entire board. If, if we're in the kind of.
Of course we will. That's, yeah, but I want to do it specifically.
Through the, for them.
Yeah, and I'll speak to the pitcher to see if we are part of deciding the, the date.
Chair, would you, would the site visit involve the applicant as well? Present for their plans or just for the, because we're doing it for the, for the. I seem like we're hearing only one side of the story.
I could ask.
I think we would give them the opportunity to participate in the site.
Well, I won't do it. I have.
Yes.
Planning on the story. Okay, so these are all good points. So we'll set the date with Heather, Bob, and Richard if he's interested. We'll not set the date, but get their, their availability. And then set the date with the butter and invite the applicant if they want to participate.
Just one, one question, something we can think about. We, should we, should we do this before we have an application? I'm saying we, we don't have an application. If we, we, normally what you do here, an application, you do a site visit as part of the application.
Right, well, you know, if anybody's gonna have a problem with that, when you touch that, the applicants, attorney, don't let that raise the issue for us. I just assume do it because we may, I mean, it won't be rushed in the sense that we still have two weeks from the size of the meeting. But if you do it sooner rather than later, it's not that it, they have that problem. So next on our agenda is approval of three minutes.
Excuse me, this, Chair. I believe there's two letters in the correspondence that you'll find on, on your website underneath the correspondence for this evening's meeting. We don't need to go over the specifics of the second letter, but there is a second letter there for the members of planning besides that invitation.
Yeah, if, if, I'm sorry, just to clear the record, if I'm not mistaken, I could be wrong, but if I'm not mistaken, I believe that the opposite anticipated that communication being taken up at the following planning board meeting. It may have been because of the timing we came in, but, but there is, I think your second communication is listed as being on the next planning board agenda.
Okay, I just saw it underneath this one. So just so you know. But there is a second letter, and I would appreciate it if you had the opportunity to review it. I'm Pete Mackin. I'm the person that wrote those letters. And, and the purpose of, of that is that there's clarity, number one. And number two is the fact that there's two years' worth of history, which many of you know, and, and the new members don't have the benefit of that two years' worth of history. All the proposals, all the questions, all the reactions from all the parties. And anything we can do to, obviously you'll go through the, the notes and the recordings and, and everything on all the plans, but, but we do appreciate that due diligence because it's, it's a very, it's been a very long journey.
So it sounds like the second communication has more to do with the application. And I would actually say in preparation for that meeting, I would say hold off on that communication until we are posting the meeting and it would be appropriate preparation for the meeting. Everybody here knows that there's a lot of material. If they want to start early, they can. But officially, back to the point that Rick was making, to be procedurally correct, we should only discuss even communications on the night of the application. So we will put that one off. In fact, I think it's on the next meeting agenda and we should take it off of the year and hold it until we know what night.
Sure, but I think our assumption is point is I would think a midnight meeting would be very quality.
Right, but I don't want it on that other, because we'll run into procedural issue if we start discussing any of the processes.
Just one last point on, on this particular note.
I feel very uncomfortable talking at all about the institution for savings without the applicant, applicant having. And I think that's, this will, this will.
I'm, I'm just surprised you haven't received, received it yet because.
Received, oh.
Received what?
Received what?
Well, I mean, the, the city council meeting was on the 11th.
This went back, the city is, no, this is a court issue.
Okay.
That decision went back to the court and I didn't make it clear. We're waiting for the judge.
I see.
To indicate to us that it's now time for us to do it. It's very, very minute steps that have to be taken. And that, so that decision went back to the judge. Of course, he's going to say, yes, get on with it. But he, because he has other business to deal with, he just hasn't got into it yet. So we cannot set a date and post it until we get from our attorney the okay to go ahead. And that's what's.
Thank you for that clarification.
All right, so as I was saying, we have three minutes on, sets of minutes on the agenda, but Linda had trouble with her computer and so we only had a chance to look at the March 16th minutes. They've been with us for quite some time, so I'll assume that people have had a chance to look at them. And at least three of us have sent her comments that I know of. So may I have a motion to approve minutes as amended for March 16th?
So moved.
Great. Second?
Second.
And I'll call roll to, is there any further discussion?
Just, I wonder, did it work, the Google Doc thing?
I gotta talk to Linda to see if she got all the changes. Yeah.
I finally figured it out today.
Yeah, it was hard for me as well.
Yeah.
But this way she has everything in one document instead of having to change three or five or whatever and consolidate them. So you make it a lot easier for.
And it's somewhere in cloud, so if there are computer problems, it's.
It's safe.
Yeah, so I need to learn to do it better because.
Well, all of us do. So thank you for kicking us into the 20%.
I, I relied on my children.
We might need their further help.
Right.
Okay, let's take a roll on approving the minutes for March 16th. Alden?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Jamie, you were here then? March 16th? I can't remember.
I'll stay in. It's better for the record, no problem.
No, but I mean, Linda should check to make sure.
I think actually the, is that the one of the minutes actually had it coming in?
Oh, that was the time?
Yes.
Yes, of course.
I didn't have it leaked yet.
Yeah, yes, you were there.
We were a little delayed, so of course you were there.
I do remember that.
Okay, so you're okay on that one.
So, so would you be going forward with using Google Docs now?
Well, Linda would.
And who, and who sets it up?
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know any, I don't, I don't know what you're adding.
Well, well, I was, to the latest set of minutes, I, I responded the way we used to respond because we didn't have Google Docs. I didn't know how I was supposed to do this.
Yeah, I, I'm assuming that Linda has to initiate when she asks us to do that. I used to go, Linda, are you there?
Linda, can you confirm for us that that works if you go forward to Google Docs? Linda, you're muted on your end if you're able to. Linda, are you there? No, we had your connection earlier.
All right, so.
By the way.
Would you please sort this out with her and then, my understanding is that she initiates a Google Docs and then puts all of us all there to share it?
We will follow up. I'll let you know.
We'll see how the next one's.
Yeah, I will put the details either came or I will send out the conclusions.
But it would be after the one she sent us today.
Right.
With so much.
Go forward basis.
So, so what will happen? She'll send us something?
By the way, for last night, I'll be the note taker. I typed everything up almost completely. Get it out to you tomorrow. I've promised the advisory committee that I'd get something by the end of the week. Their next meeting isn't until next Thursday, so if they don't get it till Monday, it's okay. But I want to make sure that my notes jive with what you think you said anyway. And so don't add anything extra. This is a little unusual, but I think of it as minutes that we were doing. We will put it on the agenda as an official meeting set of minutes to be approved officially on on, on the day 4th. But I, I do need to input that so they can get it as a working document, I'll put graph it all over it. And that would be really lucky if you can turn that around. I'll, I'll get my, my Thomas. For 19. Okay, any more updates?
No, just the previous update was going to be able to counsel the issued guidelines for. Yeah, we're giving an overview right now of what the state is expecting as to some of the guidelines that were also unexpected. They will be updated, they will be revised somehow, then once ahead, probably, you know, lower date expectation or usual thing you'd expect it. But which way, you'd have to decide what to do with the survey, whether they're going to change this. But right now, it's just a little bit of a review of what they're expecting us to do, which is important. Increase the housing, will be getting a house that's allowed as a break.
And that's available, right?
It is available, yeah.
Six.
Six.
Six, yeah. Questions? Comments?
Happy to see everybody.
Yeah.
We'll be checking in a little bit. We're trying to work it out too. We're trying to work it out. We'll be checking in a little bit. We're trying to work with IT. We're trying to work the mayor's office. There's this whole remote meeting thing, behind the meeting thing. It's never been resolved or it appeared in the pandemic that, you know, partial technological solution, but I think even separately tonight, some of the things up the council is actually there is some technology for audio issues. So, I'd like to chat with the, with the hodgepodge. Some of the setup we care that we need to have for this special administration, but that is going to be finalized to correct or make this, we'll maybe have books that have these sort of connections.
Other than us not being here back here, there were a lot of soft voices tonight. Everybody else here, it was very, even without the.
We can use the mic at the same time as the speakers.
Yeah, long story short, we've been trying, where the idea was to have it put it set up in here, tables or all that kind of stuff. That has not been sorted out, unfortunately. As, as the original, we originally were putting up, you know, the comfort chambers to do for the same server there. So, so we're actually trying to solve that problem. So, not, not integrating that, it causes a problem basically that goes. So, the idea was actually to have individual mics on the tables. At one point we were thinking of having a group membership, put those things on, the proceeds to do. I think that's a little overkill in terms of expecting all the others to change. You know, coming to say as the people on set up, I think easier to step on the tables are ready to go. But we're basically trying to work out that, that issue. It's a mixed bag of this all from the camera as well as from the audio. We're trying to make it better set up with, you know, equipment that's for a hundred.
Is it possible to, at least feed that microphone into a speaker sometimes?
Again, that's been part of the issue with, with getting the purchase of the AI support essentially for this.
But isn't there, there's no audio implementation?
There is. It, it ends up, so if someone's standing up there, it can, it can do speakers through the ceiling. But we've been told that that causes some, some issues. So, until it's actually embedded possibility, that it can cause a feedback problem. So. But again, it's sometimes others to, soon as the rest of the funds and I'm going to fully capitalize. So, let's try to buy to go or sell our high figure.
Motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Second?
A second.
Hold on to favor?
All right.
I thought we're out of here.